The only two participants.
Yeah, I put together the United States of America in a republic which stands one nation on their ground. And they're visible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, evening everyone. This is the meeting of the Smithfield Township Planning Commission. This is our regular monthly meeting for May of 2024. All right, well, I'll set to record the, you good?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Looks like we have everybody here except Nicole. So we definitely have a forum. Let's start this. There are two sets of minutes, the April 11 and the April 17. Let's start with the April 11 minutes. Let's everybody take a look at it. And I'm not going to vote on the April 17th myself because that was me that joined me and I was not present for it. Let's take a look at the 11. Motion that we approve the minutes in April 11, 2024, a regular meeting, seconded by Dave Strunk. Any comment for the board here? All in favor? Aye. Take a look at the April 17 one. Like I said, I was not here, so somebody else will have to tell me if it was done correctly.
I was not, but I am not listed as not being there. Driver listed, I've been here and not here.
I am listed as what?
Being at the meeting and not.
Ah, you can see the second paragraph needs to be amended. Right, duh. I've also wished that for you many times, Doug, but here and not here. You were good.
I was here.
Okay, Chris was not.
Okay.
So I can listen to it, I can't back my own. Somebody else.
We have a motion to approve the April 7.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion by Doug Spreyer, seconded by.
I second.
Ah, James today, seconded. So we need to make an adjustment, correct?
Yeah, that's.
Doug's listed in two places.
Listed present and not.
Okay.
That should be Chris who was not in Doug's place there.
So the motion is to approve the minutes with that correction.
The second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. One extension by me, extension by Chris.
Me.
Oh, you weren't here?
No.
And okay.
And Bob was.
Okay. Okay. Good. Next. New plan, new business and plans to act on. Wrong. Why is Franklin Hill Manor one on here? Do we know? Because I thought we took care of this.
You did. However, John needed to do a second review to make sure that things were done and we could not formally send it along until we got the Monroe County Planning Review Letter, which just came in a week or so ago.
Yeah.
Because others are under the, or under the MPC, we can't approve anything until the MPC letter comes in unless it's been more than 30 days, et cetera. And frankly, I didn't know when the plan will send it to review. So I just said, wait till we get the letter and then we can go from there. So there's nothing really that needs to be done unless the board wants to discuss any additional information or commission, I'm sorry, on behalf of John's, I think, eighth review letter you've done here.
Well, yeah, so this is the eighth, but in terms of the applicants, they completely changed the layout, pathways, roads. Have you read this thing?
Oh, that one? No, I didn't read it.
So do we need our motion to send it forward? We just.
No, you did that the last meeting.
I think it was just on so they can get lost and so that, again, we made sure we had the Monroe County Review Letter and hand before we set it up to the supervisors. There is an extension to the end of June, so there's plenty of time.
Do we need to do it? We don't need to do anything tonight?
I don't believe you need to do anything tonight if you're, if you believe that, well, maybe we should just send it along now that the Monroe County Planning Commission Review Letters in or not send it along. Confirm that you sent it along. Certainly you can do that, but I don't think you're going to get a whole lot of pushback by anyone on that, so.
Okay, I have a question. Before we push it along. There's been discussion here, perhaps somebody from Franklin Hill can answer the question. There's been discussion here about a easement, stormwater easement, sorry. And I'm just wondering who the grantor is and who the grantee of the easement is. And where is that easement specifically? I don't know.
This one? What is it?
I can hear that.
Probably browsing about the Chukatazoo.
It goes across Franklin Hill Road.
From the property.
From the property.
The Chukatazoo.
At the bottom end of the Chukatazoo property ingrained into the wet area that is right there.
So does the Chukatazoo property the recipient of the water?
They are the recipient of the water and if they want to get their approval, they're going to have to have that easement along. If they're going to want to start to build, they're going to have to do that as well.
But they do not have that?
They didn't as of last month. No, they still do not.
They still do not.
But that was a condition in my letter and it was a condition of your approval.
Right.
That they obtained that easement.
Okay, all right. That's a great thing here. All right.
Thank you for the clarification.
I heard somebody.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, Steve, okay. Yep, all right. Well, then I'll say this. Let's just make a motion that the project be approved kind of a second time, now that we removed some of the conditions that were there from last month. Specifically, we got the letter of review from the Monroe County Planning Commission. So that's, and the remaining conditions and waivers as detailed.
Yeah, which we looked at.
That we've looked at in the review letter from the engineer. And they're all.
Applying in our agreement for conditional approval form.
Yeah.
Which has been signed by the applicant.
Okay, yeah, let's do that. I make, yeah, I make that motion seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bob. Any additional discussion?
Scott, I'd just point out that if you look on the bottom of page one, it says, due to the scope of the plan, it appears that the waiver requests appear reasonable. And I believe that was the policy that this body decided. So they've confirmed that the decision made last month is reasonable.
I'm sorry, they wanted what?
The county planning commission to do. If you look at the last sentence, if I recall correctly, you approved all the waivers and they.
Yeah, we went through the waiver.
And they concur.
They concur.
I don't have this in front of me. It's an easement that the Chukatazoo property is giving to the classic quality homes. Is that what it is?
That, that would have to be done. That had to be secured in order for classic quality homes to begin. It has not. It is a, it is a condition because that's where the water has to go. Into the wet area on the other side.
Thank you.
Because it can't go on the lids. We know that. All right. So it was seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Nay.
Nay?
Yeah.
And one, and one no from Mr. Spreyer. Okay, next. What do you want to do next?
Do you want to?
Do you want to?
Yes.
There was some discussion between myself and Mr. Love and I'm not at the last meeting and we discussed this, where there is some question as to the. Well, I don't know, but what's the right word, Bob?
I think it was a question about the applicant.
The applicant and his, is, or their. Character.
Yes.
Or their, their, their difficulty, the difficulties this township has had with them in the past. Has that been resolved or is there, is that just sort of something that's hanging over this?
There've been several incidents, but it hasn't been, it's been a rocky relationship.
Yeah, okay.
And I, I just. I just, uh, question whether what they say they're going to do will be done.
And, well, I guess that's what I, my question is, what, what would they have to do?
Well, this is an easement, wouldn't they have to build some sort of, of, uh, area there for, uh, for stormwater, as part of the easement?
Yes.
Right?
Has to go into the road. Can't go over the road.
Under the road.
Under the road.
Franklin Hill.
Wasn't it what we, don't we have inspections to make sure that?
That's right.
Is that on your, is that on you?
Well, yeah, the real thing we have is they've got a high, high financial security. And if they don't do it, the contractor can step in and do it, I mean, that's, that's the real leverage that you have. And yes, we do inspections to make sure that they do what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, so really, that's all we can do.
Very well.
The engineer being? John, and what about the building inspector? Does the building inspector have anything to do with this issue? I, I, I'm just, the reason I say that is because, because the, my, from my knowledge, that builder, classic country homes, can we say that for the record? That builder has done things that made me wonder why our building inspector didn't get on the stick. Or why our building inspector allowed such homes to be built. And.
I can't speak to that, I can only say that, um, the homes that are built by classic quality are remunerable, what is necessary for uh, the building inspector to approve, approve. That's my personal opinion, I'm not a, as an architect, I'm not a building inspector. I'm just an observation, and I assume that, um, they do pass the building inspectors' requirements, but, uh, certainly, as we know, we have good builders here, and we have other builders.
But if it's fair to say like, say beyond.
I don't think this is the discussion we should be having.
David, where?
Because y- y- you, you, you don't necessarily know all the facts, and you could get into trouble saying things that aren't necessarily true, I just think you should pause for a little bit.
As I said, it's only my observations.
Yeah, we're all speculating, and that kind of stuff can get us into trouble.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's speculative, and I can't say anything more than that, because I've not skilled.
When it has issues, we, we need to talk to the people that do the inspection, but the, the question I was asking about whether the building inspection is adequate, I'm assuming it is, but I'm also saying that
my observation is, it's, there are better builders, there are worse builders.
Yeah, but it all has to do with the contract that the, the purchaser has with the building. There's different levels of quality, if they, if they're purchasing, correct, code minimum, then that's what they're gonna get.
I assume it's code minimum.
Yeah, so then it's a done deal, it's none of our, it's concern.
Also, nothing we can do here.
There's nothing we can do, and we can't go on something like this, it's, it's silly, because they're, they're complying with the ordinances and the requirements, so move on. You should know, Mr. Strunk, if you, if you had a chance to look at the minutes, and you may not have. The board all voted yes the last, or the commission all voted yes. Yeah.
All right, we have changed your mind. Let's move along, though. Next. Sketch plan for Three Point Garden Estates. Who do we have?
Good evening. My name's Mike Preston. Senior Civil Engineer with, uh, Ak Consulting, our office is the plan preparer. Uh, with me this evening is Rick Whiteup, the Director of Construction on behalf of LTS Homes. The LTS is the owner and applicant. Uh, Robert Westlow, President of LTS Homes, was unable to join us tonight, due to a prior commitment, we apologize for that. I'd be happy to provide a brief summary of the sketch plan, if you'd like.
You go ahead.
Uh, the sketch plan you have before you shows a seven lot major subdivision, proposed on approximately an eleven acre undeveloped parcel. Uh, parcel as it stands today is primarily wooded with some steep slope areas, as indicated on the plan. Uh, the existing lot is a bit unique, cuz it has frontage on both Three Point Garden Road to the south, as well as Franklin Hill Road to the north. Um, as you can tell by the topography, there's a natural ridge that runs along kind of the narrowest point of the lot. The plan before you proposes a seven single-family home subdivision and the R1 low-density residential zoning district. Last one through six to the south, uh, I'll say front on Three Point Garden Road. They're proposed to be sewed publicly, which allows for a slight reduction in lot sizes. They'll be served via private wells, all lot water. Um, and at this point, stormwater management is anticipated to be addressed via rain gardens, obviously, we're very early on in the planning phase, uh, and land development phase, but that's, that's our time at this time.
Say that again, how's your stormwater?
Via individual rain gardens for each lot.
Is that what the little clouded area is?
A little bit on the small side.
Okay.
Yes, yes, exactly. Um, one thing I would like to note is that, uh, the plan does incorporate shared driveways with pull-offs for lots.
Yeah, you may wanna think about that.
And as well as for lots four and six.
Just gonna tell you, you may wanna think about that, cuz the shared driveway thing is going to be a hot button here, so.
Well, I, I certainly appreciate that input, uh, our, our thought was that it limits the number of access points on Three Point Garden Road. Um, which we felt would be a positive.
Yeah, but that's not what our ordinance is.
Okay. Uh, I, I was under the assumption that.
Always ends up in disputes later.
Now, I'm glad you're bringing it to our attention now, I was under the assumption that in the zoning ordinance for driveways that shared and common driveways were, uh, encouraged.
No. All you're gonna, all you're doing is you're inducing a spot for a fight, the plan that was before you was, went through this process for a year before they, before adjustments and alterations were made to make something frankly, that is a lot more workable for existing residents, which isn't your problem here, because it's separated off, this is, this is the old, this is old Charlie Irons old place. This is his piece, that was, that was next to his house, this is what, this is what this is. Cuz, uh, I, picking Carol Lovelace right next to it somewhere.
Who's the chairman?
Yeah.
The exhibitor, who just thinks about.
No, 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 you know what, why don't you put it over, put it over here, probably, you can sit below. Put on the easel, make it easier for him.
That's, that's, that's really hard to see.
Thank you.
But that's what this piece, but that's what this piece is, as you come down, right over here by where you're consulting, uh, where you're, uh, let me get down, let me get to the right one. Because it's the back gate, the back gate locked access to East Stroud where Elementary is right down there too. Where they, where they, so on the right road.
What, that's a single house, no, right there.
Uh, that's a Franklin Hill side, yes, yes, he, he's got the elevators up here, and these are the ones on Three Point Garden Road. Over there. The water tower sits roughly but no, the shared driveway thing is going to be a problem, okay, right now.
Well, I'm glad you brought that to our attention, yeah, uh, on the, on the same line, would the plan commission be amounted to a flat lot configuration for that reason, to gain access to lots five and six, a flat lot?
No, I don't think they're encouraged either, cuz they're and rotten, frankly. I know you're about, all about yield, but yield on something that's twenty feet wide of little skinny strip.
I can, I can understand that vantage point, and lots that they would be, that those driveways would be serving are over acre, which over fifty thousand square feet for each, which I think is the largest lot size requirement with all lot water sewer. So we're not trying to.
I know.
Sure, them any, but they do need, they would need access.
You know, the front, the ones that are on Three Point Garden Road are gonna be slightly smaller, but that has the sewer line that runs down to it to, to four forty-seven and down, and then down. Because we know what you don't wanna do, you know you don't wanna put them, put all the roads together, cuz then you're gonna have to engineer them up to forty-foot cartways and the rest of it.
It is a much larger impact, that is true, certainly.
Impact you, not to impact everybody else, they gotta be built up.
I, it, it would, I, I would, I would posture that it may also be, uh, an increase in impervious surface over what's presented on this plan, because you have that cul-de-sac configuration, you have the full car way. I mean, versus four private driveways. But I don't, I don't have a number for me to give to you.
If you wanna do seven lots instead of four and a half or five. That's all, but I can, but I am saying, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an issue, I know what you're doing with the rain garden thing. You know, it's, uh, you know, what it is.
Okay, uh, well, there remain lot seven, which fronts on Franklin Hill Road to the north, would be proposed with all lot sewer and all lot water as well. Uh, stormwater management via rain gardens again, uh, and we have two.
That's right, cuz the Franklin Hill Road side does not have the sewer line that goes down it. I'm not sure, I don't remember.
We got a septic shown there.
Yeah, so that must be the one that does it, the Three Points does.
Uh, I, I, I think that there might be sewer there, I don't recall off the top of my head, because we were looking at doing all lot for that lot, just because of the, the distance we have to go to get down to Franklin Hill Road and the, and the terrain that we've been traversing.
Well, but if you have access to the all lot, if you have access to, to sewer line, then probably something you should do. That whole piece is lot seven, the whole top. And then driveways coming in over to the east. Yeah, right.
Why are there two driveways?
They have an alternate driveway, cuz when you come through there, if, I, I literally drive it every day, on the way home and into work in both directions, because the road goes like this, it's, it's hard to see, there's a, there's a top of gravel.
I just wanna be a lot closer.
Yeah, that's why they have the alternate driveways, and I can understand they're gonna put one spot or another, depending on, uh, how safe it has to be.
Yeah.
Cuz it's tough, because like I said, the top appears, at the, the, the top end is, is picking Carol Lovelace driveway, which is literally on the peak of it.
And one on, one, one, one configuration, the one that's not actually required, uh, we've probably a potential COVID.
Sorry, what?
A potential COVID for stormwater events, I don't think that would require the, the hatch.
Well, this is your schedule, man, I know, you, you, you're gonna go through it with, with John and
Almost definitely.
All of the, all of the various.
Certainly.
Certain scenarios with it.
We have done some additional legwork, uh, on, on the, on site, there are no wetlands, we had a wetland, uh, professional come out and evaluate the site, as reports have looked there. Uh, we did have a penny run on the site, had one of winds measured for, and a little bit longer back, that would just basically be construction periods, no tree cutting between May and August. I guess at this point, is there, there any loss that, uh?
Yeah, concerning flying lots, uh, been in the business, yeah, with LTS for about forty years, and honestly, uh, some of the communities that we did way back, and other lots that go on, the flag lot affords people privacy, there are actually, my initial thought was like yours, but building on and watching people live on and then grow up on them, um, I don't find that true at all. Uh, it is, okay, it's a, it's a, it's a twenty-foot snag, but the, the, the privacy and the uniqueness of the lots behind, uh, I think just take it all together, the shared lot, the shared driveway, you know, you do have some issues without all the agreements to take care of it, so the, the flag itself, I find a, a benefit, uh, for all reasons.
It looks like a flag on a pole.
Yeah, really, so if this is your lot, this is the flyer that you have twenty. Brings you into the lot, that's what.
So this is essentially like a right.
Go right away, so this curve actually, oh, it's this curve. But that's. Few complaints from customers at all.
Who's in the township standards?
What's your care, may I ask?
What question?
Sure, you can ask anything you want, Ron.
Usually a sketch plan comes in because some people have questions about, you're not quite sure if I can do this or should do this, as opposed to your thing. Here's the ordinance, I read it here, it's my plan, is there anything special about this plan that you've bought a sketch plan first, and that's not a loaded question, I just wanna make sure I'm not missing anything, cuz this looks pretty standard.
No, and I, 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 there, there's, there's, there's nothing other than perhaps the, the shared driveway configuration that and we, but we really wanted to take a temperature of the planning commission before we.
And that's fine, that's what it's for.
Preliminary plan that we'd be having this conversation at that stage.
Probably a little more engineering side considering one of the sketch plan.
Would, I'm just, uh, would it make sense to just bring one driveway in for the, the six? You come in and one, and then you feed them all in the back? I mean, you just come in, let's say here, and you, you have a driveway that goes right down the middle of them and eat each house? Can you do that?
Isn't that a shared?
That's not a shared thing, so you, then you're talking, then you're road, then you're talking about a road, which would be the forty-foot cartway and the rest of it, like.
Okay, that's what you mentioned.
That's what I was mentioning earlier, so, because it would have to be built up to a township, it's the township that took it over.
Right, well, you got twenty foot here and twenty foot there and twenty foot there and twenty foot there, so, by the time you put them all together, you got, should have less road. And there's only one point of access, and it becomes a township road, right?
Uh, only if it was dedicated that way, that's up to them and how the townships, whoever they were, let me do with it.
We looked at all the options, we looked at.
I'm sure you did.
The topography of the site really lends itself best at least.
Yeah, I just, I just think that, that the shared driveway is gonna be a problem.
We've run into it a lot.
Even with an agreement, sooner or later, somebody doesn't wanna plow, or somebody doesn't want any.
What's your greatest driveway across the street? That goes back to the Indian Valley, that's a, that's a shared driveway, it's filled out for gentlemen there, and it's got another Chukaitis.
Yeah, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, but I think, I think it's done properly, and the eating and everything else, it can't do anything but go right. So, with agreements at hand, actually, in today's tons of data, you don't need to have an agreement.
Where's the sharing? These two villages have to share, they don't, they're used to have that. They're snake in the, they wanna snake. Down the outsides of, of the.
Lot one could be easily have its own driveway towards to the road, and, I mean, that's a short little, but, uh, the lot four is the one that has the long shared driveway.
I think what will become tricky will be lots how to access lots five and six.
Because you, because you want a lot five and six.
Yeah, that's true, yes.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a problem with your own creation, cuz you wanna put five lots, cuz you wanna get, you wanna sell seven houses, you don't wanna sell five houses. So that's not our problem, that's their problem.
Understood.
Okay. There you go. Yeah, see you next time. Thank you, Mike. I'll see you when you put in the, uh, whatever you put in the full plan and.
All right.
What do you think, I'm tough, wait till you get to June.
Very good, thank you for your time.
Have a nice night, guys.
All right, have a safe trip back home. Thank you.
Yeah, to the ordinance one for it. Signs and billboard ordinances.
Scott, if you want, maybe the, um, support letter, you might wanna bump that up, that should be pretty quick. And then you might wanna also bump up the course in community planning and the draft lighting ordinance, just simply those will be quick, I expect this to be a fairly lengthy discussion, and by the end of it, you know, it's up, it's just a recommendation, you might wanna bump up E.
Okay, so this is, is that what this one is?
Yeah, basically, letter to you. This, Mr. Chairman, yeah, basically, the township is applying for phase two for Marshall's Falls, and Julia had asked me to see if we get out the planning commission. Julia had asked me to see if we get out the planning commission at the township, write a letter of support. More specifically, that, that basically. This, this, so you're all familiar with Marshall's Falls, both of them are at this point. Hopefully, it just opened, we had the grand opening last month. You'll notice that there's a bridge that kinda goes to nowhere. You, you know, kinda drops off on the other side and it. This, this new phase is going to add a viewing platform as well as a staircase that leads up to the back of the property to access the existing trails. In order to do that, the township is applying for this D C E D G T R P grant this year, and the deadline is coming up, uh, at the end of this month. So we need to move fairly expeditiously on a letter of support, if it's the pleasure of the, uh, commission. And I asked the commissioner review, I provided you all copy of your admittedly little dated, but still fairly robust. Just in some ways, um, comprehensive plan in two thousand one, you should all have a copy of it. And I, and I did identify a section of your comprehensive plan that identifies this phase as being consistent with it, specifically. Two dot, three dot eight. Section B specifically states, and if you go to F, it says the protection enhancement of specific recreational resources and natural attractions such as the. Township parks, back then there were two, now there's more various waterfalls. And so in my opinion, it is consistent and. You know, what I'm asking is basically for a, a motion to submit a letter of, of recommendation to the, to this effect, um.
Who does the letter go to?
It goes to Julia.
Okay, yeah, I'll make a motion that the planning commission submit a letter of recommendation for this grant.
Seconded.
And it makes it accessible for people, all abilities, disabilities.
Yes, it's not, it's a good question. So that's discussion of motion, right? So, yes, it's for anyone that's, that, that's not, it's not handicap accessible, simply because the train's impossible to make it handicap accessible. But for the majority of folks that are able, Julie explained it really well last night. I try to paraphrase, basically paraphrasing it is, if, as long as you are not, um, currently. Basically, as long as you're not.
Yeah, what else?
Yeah, basically, yeah, for, for most folks.
So visitors, all ages, so old people.
Yeah, 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 it's accessible for most.
I think that, that if, if you can stand upright and, and move yourself on your own, it's accessible.
There's no elevator.
Ambulatory access.
Ambulatory. There you go.
You're welcome. Yeah, I, I don't do one out.
I'm sorry, there's a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor. It's been seconded by me. Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Would you like, um, would you like to draft it up, Scott?
Just have Julia do it.
Yeah. That's got.
I wish you'd get it worded right.
Yeah, sure, sure, word it the way. That's fine.
Okay, we can have staff or somebody.
Yeah, that's fine, Scott will sign it. I'll sign it. I have in my packet, Doc, a, a letter that already is under Scott's signature. Is that the same letter or does that something different?
It addressed to Scott.
No, it's probably. Yeah, that was probably.
Signed by Julia, alright, got it, I misunderstood that.
Yeah, she can turn it around and send it over to me also.
Here's a simple letter right there, that's the supervisor did, so that was kind of changing, they just changed the planning commission.
Well, well, pull in the same direction. Alright, um, what's the next one you wanted to do? You wanted to adjust?
Yeah, I can just give you, before we get into the whole sign ordinance thing, um, if, if the commission would like, for old and unfinished, unfinished business, we have a brief update. On the lighting ordinance.
Yeah.
I don't know if you wanna procedurally go to old and unfinished business before you.
No, just do, let's just.
Okay, yeah, so if you wanna just do A and B, basically, we got an update, we got an email, everyone should have an email from Eric Koopman from the Monroe County Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Lighting ordinance. He did have a chance, so basically, I think, does everyone have that email in front of them? It should be from Eric Koopman.
Yep.
Went to the township. And, um. This was, um, I believe that's the. They all, you have the, okay, yeah, there's, there's two letters from Eric, so it's a little confusing. Make sure it says lighting standards ordinance on the top, basically. He asked where the standards came from. I emailed him back and let him know where it came from, that is a dark sky, mountain ordinance.
Yes.
Um, what initially, he, he asks some questions that remain unanswered, um, so what initially brought about the need for this ordinance? And he also asks if the specific standards are appropriate, then the real issue becomes enforcement, which is also the position of the planning commission here, so that's good to see. And then he said that might require the township to purchase specialized equipment for illumination measurements as well as additional training, which is consistent with previous conversations.
Yeah, these things we've certainly discussed a lot.
And then he also states that, um, the biggest concerns for, for a brief of electronic message boards. He also points out that there's a lot of litigiousness with these. So, kind of a fair warning, and this is also something, you know, I'm kinda pointing out to our solicitor here, is that there's some litigiousness with these, apparently with these. Electronic billboards. And then finally, he said, um, the proposed definition should be consistent with other township ordinances, and he promises, or he doesn't, he says he'll try to take another. Closer look at the amendments, I mean, you know, there's any red flags, so. Uh, open that up to discussion.
I mean, we've been, we have been, we have been talking about it, anything like. What stage are you at? Is there, is there a, a working draft that you want us, I mean, I know we, we haven't gotten that far yet.
We were waiting on their.
On theirs?
Sort of, yeah, so we might wanna consider, maybe I can reach out and kinda.
I was gonna say, maybe it's time to then at least put something together as working ground, if they wanna see, if they wanna see. But clearly, we, we, we've already discussed all the light pollution, the proliferation of the various.
Training.
Pictures of the, uh, the ferocious layers of.
Yeah.
Of ones, but yeah, we know about it, fortunately, we know what it is.
Yeah, I emailed him all of, everything that you saw, this was his response to all that, so it's, it may be that he still is, you know, he hasn't quite.
So the response is, we overwhelmed him, is what the response is, alright?
So Alex, does this current draft ordinance address illuminated billboards?
That's a great question, and it's, it's, so in the new signage draft that you're gonna be looking at today, I actually incorporated language specifically to lighted signs. Which didn't make its way into the lighting ordinance, simply because of the lighting warrant. I felt lighting warrants is so voluminous as it is. Another, you know, five pages just for lighted signs might be unnecessary and. It might be more appropriate to put in the signage ordinance, you know, so that's, that's a call I made for these drafts. So.
Well, that, that seems logical.
Okay.
I guess we need to decide, because I'm sure we'll look at it, but what is the definition of the lighted sign?
Yeah.
You have a piece of plywood with paint on it and light it from both sides, you need to have that lit. But I'm, I'm thinking about the ones that are the changing billboards that. Some of those can, you know, if there's a lot of white in that, it can become very.
Quite destructive.
And I promise we will get to that at that, when we discuss the ordinance, and all, everything you ask will be answered.
Okay. So, the fact that it's, they're on, they are litigious should not deter us from trying to do what we think is right for the township.
That was correct.
Okay, good feedback. So I can reach out to them and say, you know, I promised last time we set up a meeting with, potentially Scott and I, and I'll try to. Say, let's, let, please, let's have that meeting so that next month we can have more substantive comments back to the planning commission. I don't know if that's something you're still comfortable with doing. I, I'm definitely still interested.
No, I totally gonna do it.
Okay, sure. Thanks, Alex.
Sure. Alright, well, that's pretty much it on that. Are there any other questions?
No, no, thank. Okay, and that's gonna come down another month or two down the road, it'll only get better.
Is the most current draft on the website?
Yep.
Is that something that I can find just by going to the website?
Yeah.
Or is it going to use special link?
No.
I mean, I'll double check on that, I believe it is, but I will double check.
Okay.
I think the most current draft on there is dated four twenty four.
Alright, so if it's on there, okay. I will double check on that for you, though.
I'd just like to point out that the, the M C P C in reviewing this is really. Reviewing it informally as a favor, because this is not a zoning ordinance, this is under a standard bottom section of our code.
It was good to get there. The only other thing I put on here was that some of the planning commissioners attended that course and completed the course in community planning, so. Hopefully at a later date, you know, that, it was, I, I, I also happen to be there and it, you know, we're very thorough, they spent a whole, there were three sessions. And, um, I don't know if, to, to the present, I was with her, I don't know if you wanna talk about it a little bit. Unfortunately, Nicole's not with us today, um, there may be a more thorough summary in the future, um. But anyway, it was, it was, I thought it was a very informative course, I certainly.
It was, it was. Where was it? It was at, uh, the new library. Three hours, chaos.
Thanks for describing the planning commissioner. Position is. The steps getting on the time commission and just different, uh. Components that you would be dealing with in the, in the media, well, not in depth. About different, it's like Saldo or anything like that, but just an overall view. So it was pretty.
A view of our role.
Correct.
Good. Excellent, next. Grab sign billboard ordinance. Yes, so I emailed around everybody. On this commission, uh, the township, my little drive around. Of our mostly wherever we would consider our commercial forward, yeah. So everybody saw, everybody saw my, my pictures.
Oh, yeah.
So. We know all of that was, is crap, so what does this ordinance draft do? That addresses the flags and all the rest of the nonsense that we know cannot possibly be. Either allowed or is good for any area that have something that looks like. Uh, an ongoing third world flea market. So, what's in there?
I believe that's addressed on number twenty, page number twenty, twenty three.
Alright.
So if you look at page number, so you see the green highlight, unfortunately, the copies cannot see.
Oh, I see, okay.
But it says temporary promotional signs on retail business and premises, and basically. Maybe everyone should read that. So section one one three of the draft, sec, in the E D. M one zones, temporary signs, basically, and then two is temporary promotional signs, and it states basically that. Yeah. And the other thing that we did is we added in definitions, we actually clearly defined the flag. Under mentioned, temporary promotional signs like that are mentioned.
Okay, there we go. These are my signs. These are my pictures of my little run, in my little drive around here. So there's not a single one of these is really anything that would be permitted, frankly, anywhere. Alright, so that's what I'm showing everybody, so this, this is what I did in my, in a, in just in a small drive around. This is a sign for the Dunkin' Donuts down near Delaware Water Gap, that's not anywhere near the Dunkin' Donuts, it's had to put it on the circle. Alright, I don't see why we need any authority other than to send someone down there in the township to pull the damn things out of the ground. Alright, none of these things were ever allowed, never to be allowed. Here's. Campaign signs that were placed that were removed, so. Yeah, campaign signs are different anyway, alright, because campaign signs are gonna fall under a different level of constitutional scrutiny and so forth. You know, you tie the place in manner, regu, you know, regulations and so forth. But here you go, you get off, you get off the highway, this is the, so here it is. So everything that's, everything that's vertical, this guy stuck a sign for wanting to cigarette brand on. Okay, this is what I said around everybody.
Yeah.
Alright, I mean, sign ordinance is nice, but why don't we just start here? With this kind of stuff. That's what I'm, I'd say, here's the odd lot across from my house. How many signs do you gotta have to go into the damn odd lot? I'm not even talking about the ones that he's stuck on the side of his, on the side of his building or on the side of his, of his, uh. Firework, uh, trail of the thing that he's got over there.
Right.
Here's ones, I don't even know what this is. Social Vibes venue, these things pop, these things popped up. Near the gas station that was the old, that was the old golf station. Where, what are these from? These things have been here, these things have been here for a couple of months. I don't know, I have no idea what this is, but there's no earthly way that could be there. Here's, these are the Dunkin' Donuts signs. You know, I mean, I, you know, I got all the various Dunkin' Donuts signs from one end, you know, from one end to the other. Here's the broad view of, um. How lovely that is, that panorama. Here's the, here's the, here's the panorama from the, you know, from the odd lot, and this is. Look, this is, this is, this is flea market nonsense. None of it's allowed under the ordinance we have now. Why are these things still here, is my big question?
Because it's not being enforced.
Okay, wow, gee, alright.
Yeah, yeah, gee. That's something we haven't heard before.
And I'm not, and I'm not against going through any, any of this stuff. But before I'm gonna waste my time and read twenty eight pages of this, start here. And that is one commissioner's opinion, who drives this, this road every day.
Yep.
But this stinks. Okay? None of this is allowed, because nobody's ever said to them, get, get your signs down.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
After our last meeting, a couple of days later, I went in to see Ken Wolf. And I asked him about the lighting issues at these places we talked about.
Yeah, sure.
And I said, there's gotta be something in the ordinances that would restrict them from doing the lighting the way they are. And he was getting ready to leave on vacation next day. And he said he'd look at the ordinance, and I had, and I were both kinda looking at the time. He said, the only thing that there's really any meat is in the Saldo. And, um.
He said what?
That is in the Saldo, uh, about lighting. And we looked at it, and I said, well, yeah, okay, it relates to Saldo, but it does have language in there about the glare and pointing down and all that. I said, I think we can enforce that, even though it wasn't necessarily land development. He said, they, if they, if they are smart enough to know that that may not be applicable, okay, but we'll get them the next time. So I think he did something, because when you drive by cigarette place over by Dunkin' Donuts. Those lights are now like this, they used to be like this, they're now straight down. And at the cigarette, um, sorry, the beer place, those lights were off when I drove by the last time.
And you, you had mentioned that, have you noticed the difference?
Actually, they did, I knew them straight down.
Okay. Can I, uh, confess something? I did that.
Yeah.
Wasn't Ken.
You told me, yeah.
Ken told you or I told you?
So you told.
No, you went and talked to him?
I went and talked to K P, and I said, look, we gotta do something about this, let's try experimenting. He was very willing to do it. I said, first he turned it hard way down, and we turned them all the way horizontal at the beer place. And at the cigarette place, they're now pointing down at the building.
Yeah.
There's one by the sign near the road that still has to be adjusted, but, um. He was very happy to, to try to accommodate, and he was very nice about it, and I think he's never been approached before. And also, I think in, in some of these situations, um, some, uh. Uh, some conversation and a little, you know, force behind it of the township is enough.
So, so the question is, why isn't Ken doing this? Who's responsible for this?
We are examining that issue now. Can we leave it at that?
Sure.
Okay.
We've been talking about this for years.
And a couple of us said, why don't we just go talk to the guy, right?
You said that, I said that.
Ken was very nice, he said he would handle it, I thought he did.
He didn't, I didn't.
Okay, bravo to you, David.
Thank you.
No, but I, I'm not available for zoning laws.
Yeah, right, you're, you don't need another hat, no?
No.
Uh, anyway, this whole subject is under discussion, let's just leave it at that.
Okay, very good.
Fair enough.
Alright. Do you wanna talk about the.
Yeah.
Lighted signs?
Sure.
I know I promised I wouldn't, so.
Yes, please.
I would be remiss if I didn't bring that back up. So if you look at page, let's see here, page eighteen is where it starts. Externally illuminated, so there's two different types of illuminated signs. There's externally illuminated, where there's like a light bulb that shines onto a sign. And then there's internally illuminated, where the bulbs are, or L E D, are within the sign and it projects outward.
Yeah.
And these standards are from, are condensed from, I, I. And these standards are from are condensed from, I I worked on this quite a bit and I. Felt to be appropriate to stick them in here. There's a lot of standards. Hopefully, the commissioners have had a chance to review it. I don't think. I want to get into the minutia with everyone here tonight, but nonetheless, if you haven't yet reviewed it. I understand this is gonna be on the work session agenda for next Wednesday. I would definitely recommend reviewing it before then because this is gonna go before the governing body for deliberation. So.
Is that the five o'clock meeting on Wednesday?
The what?
Wednesday is the five o'clock meeting?
Yeah, fifteen, is it?
That one I can actually make.
Yeah, it is.
I guess um. The only other thing to point out is the definitions have color photos. That go along with each of the various types of signs.
Ooh.
Which I do not. Recall seeing a whole lot of in our current ordinance. Certainly not this many. And so that would be a. Significant change. And it's. A lot of that is based on Eric Koopman's informal review back in twenty twenty three. He. His recommended, I get, I just want to point out to the commissioners that this is not, this was the supervisors have asked to have passed me with. Taking lead on this and presenting it before the planning commission and also for the board next. So this was. You know, so I was tasked with taking Eric Koopman's informal review and incorporating those comments. And so that's kind of what I did. Those, one of them was Chestnut Hill Township. Basically, if you read it. Where is that letter? He basically, and this is the one that's. This is the other email that I had previously referenced, which basically says. It doesn't have a title. It just has Julia's name up on the upper left hand side. And he basically says that he's concerned about freedom of speech issues and regulating signs based on content, which is a, I think, something to keep in mind. Um. He said that's an issue with about ninety five percent municipal ordinances. He um, he also mentioned offensive messages. Part of the draft that you reviewed, I have removed that whole section. Um, so he said you might want to keep that out of the ordinance altogether. So I took that up. And then the the one, the third paragraph, he basically references Chestnut Hill Township's ordinance on signs. And he says, that's also a good ordinance in general. And I recommend taking a look at it for other standards. You may want to put into yours like specifics for electronic message signs. And area bonuses for for wood release signs. And so. I had in the email that you got in preparation with this meeting, you've had a copy of Chestnut Hills, but. To limit the number of printed copies, we didn't print it out here, but that where a lot of the underlying language in this ordinance comes, you might might be wondering, where's, what's all this underlying language? Well, it's. Changes that I made from the draft that I saw. That and 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 I incorporated a lot of the language from Chestnut Hill Townships, especially in like the procedures and permits section, maintenance and repair, not legal, nonconforming signs. These, the the lighting standards weren't from Chestnut Hill. I believe that was from one of the other lighting ordinances that's on the website. But anyway, that's where a lot of that language came from. I also borrowed a lot of their language on applicability. A lot of, and and also. The section one purpose where it says, you know, where you see basically right on the front page where it says, the purpose of this chapter shall be, and then one, two, three, all that was right from Chestnut Hill Township's ordinance. Pretty much copy and paste it right into here, but also keeping the spirit of whoever wrote the draft here. About every business, you know, incurred stating that it's understood that every business is unique, et cetera, et cetera. So. Just to give you a little context of how I've. Kind of worked here. Um. So that's pretty much all I wanted to say on this.
Thank you.
I'm gonna be honest with you, there's probably much like when we were talking about the lighting wars the last time, probably the single most useful thing that I see in all of this is the fact that you got. Some examples that we put right in there. And the illustrations right in it. Are. Are. Really useful. You don't have to worry about, you know, the just the word description, you can see it as well. The the goal is to make whatever we put into place. User friendly enough. Then I've got people want to avoid having it enforced upon them, but if they simply want to comply because, oh, to look at it here. And they get to do that, you know, get it at the at the front end of them. Versus, you know, at the carrot end versus the stick end.
So you, Alex, you had mentioned, uh, I guess it was Eric had mentioned it about the. Billboard people being litigious. Would it make sense to have them review that section relating to signs?
No.
To see what their comments would be?
Yeah.
No?
Want me to write it for you? I'll write you what your comments are. Nothing. They don't, they don't want anything that they're gonna, they're not gonna want anything. You're gonna be regulated. We're gonna do what we're gonna do within the within our own boundary law, you know, bounds of our own law that's that.
Okay.
There's nothing in this that.
Well, he did mention.
That you would consider.
And that is one of the biggest issues, right? Yeah.
I don't think they're taking any, you would consider. Holders.
Excuses, yeah.
Yeah, you know what I mean? There's nothing.
Yeah, I haven't read it. I'm just curious.
Yeah, you'll see when you when you when you start to piece through, it's. You know, yes, you can have a billboard, but it can only be two feet by three feet. That's not what that, that's not what this is, you know?
What do you want from me, boss? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry to uh. Once again, play the same tune. But uh. There are townships, towns throughout America. That have decided that uh. Signs be regulated to. Uh, the uniform strip, uniform size. Uh, uniform color. So for example, and I go back to Freeport, Maine. Where the McDonald's sign at Free in Freeport, Maine is like that big, with a little arch on it and it says McDonald's. And it's their typeface, but it's small. Uh. And so forth throughout the town. White signs with dark green lettering, Times Roman, whatever it is, it's decided on by the town fathers. If all uniform. And that's the way they planned it. And that's the way it looks. But when you enter that township, you are. You are already. Tuned in. To the the aesthetics of. The. The free speech aspect, that is to say.
Where is this in Freeport?
Freeport.
Uh, also, if you go to Doylestown, similar. But I've looked at, I've looked at the uh. Um. The ordinance from Doylestown and. It's extremely complex because it covers so much of everything.
Right, every little detail.
And especially in the older part of town, the center.
Right.
And. All I can say is. First, when I drafted this originally, my intention was to make it simple enough so that anyone reading it and wanting to put up a sign. Could figure out what they had to do. And secondly, realizing that. We're not Freeport. We don't have the kind of um. Um. Political weight that they do because. Somebody comes in like Wawa, where it says.
Right.
Wawa is their own ideas and what they want. And we can. Uh. Talk to them to a blow in their face, but they're gonna say, no, we want a sign up here. We want this down here. This is where we work. And this, there's not a lot of flexibility with a lot of those people unless you're somebody like Freeport, which is really saying. You want to come in and have a business here? Well, this is what you have to do.
Right.
Whereas we're saying, we love your business.
Yeah, that's right.
That's the difference.
No, I get it. I get it.
And Scott, exactly the the nineties, the supervisors at the time. Had joined together with other townships and they had. They were trying to get rid of all the billboards, just totally get rid of them, kind of like with Vermont. You don't see any billboards up there. And there was a big push. And it just, it just didn't happen.
Well, I think it's a, it's a first amendment. Uh, question beyond anything else that. You've got a right to put up a message.
Well, maybe, uh, but I also think the ship had already sailed. There's so many of them up there. That it would be hard to, you can't take them down. And that it just, it just became a real obstacle.
We really don't have many. We have some, but compared to other places. They really don't have a lot. And the ones that I object to, I wish we could somewhat get rid of are the ones on. Uh, two oh nine that are up on the hill.
Well, it's funny because they were put there under an agreement to get rid of all of the dilapidated signs that were along the road.
That were along the road.
Yeah, so you know, if the supervisor.
And before you were here.
Proved that. Because there were a lot of crappy signs along that same corridor.
Wasn't the highway supposed to go?
Right.
That's why one is empty.
Yeah.
Yes, Christine, before you.
But I, what I wanted to piggyback on Doug's comment about Freeport and states like Maine and Vermont. Don't allow, the state doesn't allow billboards. So I think towns like Freeport and. You know, they they have. A lot more. It's almost expected in in a place where they.
From the state. That's right.
Right.
Lots of enforcement. Yeah. Well, the state is preemptive. They've already, they've already regulated, so you're not gonna be overregulating underneath. It's called, it's called preemption.
But back September fourteen, twenty twenty. I sent around to everybody as. A structure. Like you were talking about Freeport, I sent around, some of us, the ones board mayor to remember, I sent around how Williamsburg, Virginia does it.
Yeah.
Now, understanding not that we are not, we're not Williamsburg, Virginia, but but the what were the thing that I liked about it was. The structure of the way they laid out how in their zoning districts they were going to deal with. Their billboards.
Right.
And there's and there's signage. Because. All of the sections were readable in the same fashion. So if you were in their super historic district, it was still, the set, the statute was still set up in the same set of structure that it would be. If you were in a more residential one outside of the main Williamsburg one. And it actually. Take a look at it. I can actually send it. It's not a problem. But it it actually makes it easy to. Follow the structure depending upon where you want to put the thing. And I don't agree with you on on something like a Wawa. Because I've been in plenty of Wawas and Dollar Generals all over the United States and the East Coast. And if they want it to be there, it will look different than the other Wawas. And it'll look different than the different than the other Dollar Generals. Their Dollar General, I've seen at least four different configurations on the outside of, for example.
But but what Robert's pointing out is, excuse me. Robert's pointing out is, you know, who wants who more? Um, I mean, do we need them more than they need us?
They need us more than we need them.
You think so?
Absolutely. Unquestionably, if they want to be there at the end of that, of the end of that uh exit on Route eighty.
Yeah.
They will be there under what we say they will be there. It is not the other way around.
Right, right.
At all.
I wish that were true.
Because we, there's only one Marshall Street exit and we have it. They want to be there.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't believe the other way.
That's what they said with them.
I know that. What I'm just saying is that what I'm saying is we are not powerful. We're not a thing ball ball here in this township. And I think you'll like, I'll send it to you for the the Williamsburg one.
But can't you? You're making signs, what you're saying and what you're saying, uh, Scott, Robert, and you are saying. Uh. We create a theme. You create a theme for it.
It's a theme.
Yeah, for the township.
It is.
Okay, you create the theme. The the town goes back to seventeen thirty two. Why can't you take, make it in a theme that? Is indicative of Smithfield Township. And then you make the sign and then you agree and then you and then you wouldn't be stepping on anybody's toes as to. As to a first amendment because it's it's just that you're keeping the theme of the town. And you're asking it to be in the town or to place the business is to mine the theme and to have this signage. That. Will be indicative of Smithfield Township.
But it's not retroactive. You can't make all.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, they have to grandfather everybody.
Oh, can't use that word.
Yeah, can't use that word. Very good.
That's right.
The. In reality, the reason that I came across is that, because I read a lot of them before I landed on Williamsburg, Virginia. But I tried to, I tried to limit my spot, you know, four years ago when I was doing this, to places that I'd been and I'd noticed. Because I'd already been on this board by that point. And so, uh, well, okay, but the fact that the. The sections are set up in the in the same fashion is what lends itself to that everything to a theme.
But once you start, it's. Then once you start. Even though there there are signs that are already up there. But you're creating the theme and as the theme gets grows. People will want to.
Yeah.
Be part of the theme. So the businesses will adapt. Rather than. You're gonna have people that are stubborn and gonna say, I'm gonna keep this sign because I don't have to change it, but. When people say, oh, gee, that looks like a better place to, because it. Makes it feel like. Yeah, they want to be there. And all signs are are very important to bring people into a place.
Do you want to say something?
I can only say that we have limited power to do what you're asking.
It's not, it's just. And the snow, it's not all trapped at the top of the mountain. I've, I've, the snowflake stops at the mountain and it is an avalanche.
You shouldn't be directing these suggestions to me. I've given up. I gave it to Alex.
No, no. I'm not looking at you as you're the. Well, I would then. Since. Since it's an opinion and it's a suggestion, I thought that it might work because of the thing that everybody is saying.
Look, I don't want to, I don't want to, uh, yet again. You know, sacrifice the good on the altar of the perfect like we were doing with, like we were doing with the light. Where'd that be from? Uh. Again, seven, eight years ago, I didn't think we would be discussing this. Either frankly, much, much less dark sky and the rest of it. I think we've. We've come an awfully long way. And so we've come a long way. I don't want to. Seem like I'm piling on or or anything else that way, but I know you weren't here. And. The internet never dies. So I have to still have the twenty twenty version of the ordinance I said that, but take a look at it as as just another example.
The Williamsburg stuff.
The with, that one just happens to be that one.
That's the signage.
That's, that's the signage one, the the dark sky was the other time, you know, because I had the, you know, the links and all the rest of that saved. From when we first brought that up, you know, five, six years ago. Oh, we're in a good direction. I like this. All right, you wanted to say something, Brad.
Yeah, I applaud your suggestion. And lighting is really a trend nationally in my experience.
Yes.
And communities, I think it's it's worth being careful not being the fetus about this, as in the ship has sailed. People. Um. Don't define yourself but what what you can't do. Because you guys have a lot of power and the community is getting more power as we as we get together. And I think this is a really valuable. Uh, aspiration. And if people will follow, if you suggest a sign, people already have signs, they can be. They we can suggest, you know, you, why don't you try this? And after a while, it may take. So, thank you. And so you can't complete first minute rights with humans. How bright a sign is?
You have to show the the illuminations that we've, we've been through all these guardians before.
Yeah, but we're not closer now.
But we're gonna make it a reality this year.
All I could plead for is this. Pass something because.
Yes.
We have developers out there. We have people who are looking for direction on signs. And what we have is an old ordinance with a lot of things in it. That are no longer relevant anymore or just uh don't capture the questions.
Well, the, well, the sign world has changed also. Billboards are not nearly as valuable as they were.
Absolutely.
Because everybody, everybody, everybody gets where they're gonna go by looking at their phone and wrapped up or, you know, that kind of thing. And the and the billboard aspect is really a local aspect. It's not come to here fifty miles ahead.
Look at the old ordinance that we have in the code. And when in billboards, it's got a whole section about how we're supposed to judge electronic billboard and so what. It's all totally outdated.
It's now outdated. That's right. But these other ones in here with the with the illustrations with it, this is not outdated. Because you're always going to have somewhere along the line, you're always gonna have signs that are gonna want to look like this. Whatever they are.
But those will probably be electronic too pretty soon.
Well, with electronic, you're not, but you look, but there's shape.
You know.
You know, there's shape and structure here, but that's what makes. This so much better than I think we already have right now.
Lighting sets the mood.
It's a question about off premises signs, which I'd love to get rid of some of them quickly. Um, questions about um. Uh. Uh, political and um. And religious sites and even um for sales signs where our code. Uh, was before uh Reed versus Harris Gilroy. Which was two thousand fifteen, which essentially outlawed any uh right of any community to regulate those souls. And. I'd like to get ahead of the curve on that, which this does, rather than behind it like Middle Smithfield, which. Has regulation that you can't put signs on the municipal property or in parks and then it goes on and on. Well, that's it. You can't tell people to do that anymore. If it's, if it's public property, they can put a sign up. It's right in front of our door. We might not like it, but you can't regulate it. So this addresses a lot of that too.
Say that again, somebody can put a sign in their parking lot?
If it's a, if it's a sign with a message, yes.
Can Tony, can Tony's Pete put us on?
No.
This is where Eric Koopman is talking about.
Don't make me get into this.
If it's public property, what are we gonna do?
That's where Alaska Pete has a sign.
Except the, like the echoes outside of the bus stop.
Yeah, yeah, like that.
This is right, pleasure, on the same sign, and this town has the state, which says Alaska Pete, and then it says.
Let's go, it's time to place a manner of regulation, not content of the site, so. In certain, in certain levels of expression, afforded greater scrutiny.
I agree, we don't, I have my file, I wish I did.
We're gonna discuss this at the, at the line session, Alex. Yeah, the old files.
Freeport.
Yeah, right.
So that would be.
Try out the discussion, I think.
For the COVID handle. From when we all filed, and I pulled them all out.
All right, everyone, are we ready to go?
Make a motion. Wait, wait, wait. What's, no, it's really one very important pressing item of business, that's D, five D.
Yeah, we didn't do that.
I don't want you to be, well, retract your motion.
I didn't make a motion yet, I said, are we ready to go?
I thought, okay, thought somebody.
You want to?
Okay.
You're right, I missed one.
Uh, yeah, this one's kind of, kind of critical, time-sensitive. Would you like me to introduce it?
Yes, please, yeah.
So this is item D on new business, draft amendment to chapter twenty-seven, number one, three D, which is the zoning ordinance. Standards on wetlands, district regulations, three D. And the board supervisors has passed the with working on this. As they, this was discussed at the work session that you were at. So this shouldn't come as a surprise to those who were there, for those that weren't there. Board supervisors would like to add more detail on the standards for wetlands in the zoning ordinance. And they are providing this draft, you pursuant to the M P C requirements for a recommendation to the board supervisors prior to adoption. So I understand it's the intent of the board to adopt this fairly expeditiously, and so what you have here is, are basically, we're not necessarily changing the definition of what a wetland is, but this, not the standards and criteria for wetlands are increasing in detail, and that's, there's, you know, in the, in the previous ordinance, there was only a few sections, there was section D, one, A, B, and section two, basically. Now it's several pages, which is consistent with a lot of other municipalities that have standards on wetlands. There was identified that there were some issues with the previous ordinance. And those issues have been remedied in this ordinance update.
I think it's also consistent with EPA and Conservation District rules that we have to follow anyway. Just, we never had the definitions here.
They're gonna ask how much this is already preempted anyway, that we have to put it in, right? Okay. I thought delineation was a term only used with regard to Corps of Engineers. Well, Corps, Army Corps of Engineers criteria.
Well, that's in there.
Oh, yeah.
But it's just much clearer than we ever had it before. And it's consistent with what we're required really to do now under the law, but we just never added in the code, so nobody knew.
Okay.
At least it delineates it for anyone who wants to think of developing on wetlands.
Are we gonna bring this up during the? No, are you looking for a recommendation tonight?
Yeah, uh, uh, yeah, I'm looking for a recommend, a formal recommendation of the board for.
We'd like to pass this, so there was no question about what the development process is and all the restrictions are on some of our wetlands.
Well, do you want to go read it right now?
You can read it.
Right now?
You know, I give you Alex, who's, who's protecting this whole thing and, and all the research.
Right, okay.
There's really nothing, the weak control. But I, I think where really is, has changed our viewpoint is just that Alex is here, who knows a lot about the wetlands and where they are in the township, and where you would have to do a study, you know, when it's a hydrographic study or something, to be able to say, we've done this, we can build on it. Just much clearer than it was.
And that would be required before, that would be required before any development to have a study done?
Yeah. An applicant would have to.
Any applicant.
Agree all this.
Yeah.
If the indicators are on there a lot, so.
If the indicators are on there a lot.
Right, so if it's.
It's not every project, it's if there's every project that, that has, basically Army Corps of Wetland delineated part on, yeah.
So the developer would have to get the report.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what triggered, what triggered.
To show us.
That's what that was.
So he has an example, if you had a major subdivision sketch planted for you, and the applicant stated at this meeting that there were no wetlands in sight, and you had someone do a deline, someone do an investigation. So you know.
Right.
That would be required.
And they, they felt that there are no wetlands on site, so they don't have to do a delineation. And so they, they actually brought someone in to take a look at the site, to see if there were any of those three factors, which are explained in.
Right, yeah, you explained the last thing.
But they said that, they said that, from what they, they said there was no wetlands, but they didn't show us any documentation.
They didn't show us any documentations, but that's kind of a situation like, let's say, in fact, there are no indicators on that property, and they wouldn't have to go through the formal full delineation.
Right.
You don't have to delineate something that's not there.
We get it, Alex, and China is because Alex is a judge of whether there may be further investigations, because it's pretty difficult to see it perpetual.
That's not a great, that's not a great example, because it's a sketch plan without an engineering review, but it's something that came to mind just now, I figured.
Yeah, we had it.
Whoever, he's not Alex, he's Dr. Alex.
So this is the changes. I heard somebody call him Doc.
I, I call him Doc all the time.
I call him Doc all the time. All right. Alex, not Doctor. If, don't, isn't there, like, aren't there, like, geologic maps of this whole town? Soil maps? That indicate the types of soils in all the different locations.
Conservation District as well.
Am I right?
Correct.
That, that we start.
That's, that's the first, generally, I mean, I, I would ask John that first, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but generally, when you have a property, one of the things that you look at is for hydro soils. Right, that's the first thing you would look at, if there's a stream or hydro soils, that would trigger the need for an investigation.
Right. When you see, when we get the plans in front of us.
Yeah.
You'll see the little abbreviations and the letters, it'll, it'll show on the.
Yeah, I've seen.
On the, those are soil types, those are, those are soil types.
Yeah, here, here's an example, a recent example. Someone applied for a change in, or will apply for a change in, in zoning in one of our areas that is a wetland area. And towards something that I assume they want to build. So my first question to the engineer is, well, this is like marginal wetlands. Is this in the wetlands? Because you should know that if it is, you probably cannot construct it. And the answer is, we've already done the hydrographic, whatever they call it, so it's a test.
But, but there's three criteria for wetlands, there's hydro soils, there's hydrologic indicators, and then there's vegetation.
So the answer is, we've already done that, and it's not, well, we'll see that when they imply, but they, they've already done what we need have done to say it is or it is not wetlands. So that has to be done anywhere, where it's, it's a question.
Right.
Where it's a question.
Make a motion that they use the. Okay.
Right. That it be, then we make a recommendation for the supervisors to pass it.
Yeah. We make a recommendation for the supervisors to pass this.
Accept and.
Second.
Anything else?
Discussion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have made our, we have done our duty, make a motion, you're.
Second.
Take it like Doug, let's go.
Aye.
Non-deal.
I'm aware. Grazie.